You are now tuned in to Mind, Body and Soul with Annette. Where your host, Annette Harris, analyze intriguing life questions and concerns such as, do Christians suffer from mental illness? Have you wondered why they act abnormal? Or you may ask, what is really going on in their minds? Do you need an app? Well, keep listening for a biblical understanding of the psychology of the mind.
Hey, 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 guys, welcome, welcome, welcome to this evening session of Mind, Body and Soul with Annette. I am your host, Annette Harris. Thank you so much for joining us on this evening for watching and or listening. Hey, we are on Facebook Live. So I'm going to ask each of you, if you come in, no, when you come in, excuse me. Go ahead and click that share button, click the share button on my page, Annette Get Caught in the Net, because it's time for you to come on and get caught in the net. It is time, it is past time. We are doing a special session on this evening. Also, my super duper producer over at Intellectual Radio is, he actually placed us on YouTube, my YouTube channel, if you go there and type in Get Caught in the Net, you will hear us live there at the present time. At the end of the session, we will upload the video so you can see us there as well. So I'm so excited this evening. That was a slamming promo, I've got to say that. I love that promo. I'm like, kudos, everything else to wonderful Brandy McCord, I have to give her another shout out. Oh, my God, Quantum Imaging, their imaging is just off the chain, I'm telling you. And I'm so glad that she was able to put that together for us. So a great shout out to her. You see, I have a panel here and I'm expecting some more to come on in. Once their schedules will allow them to, we actually had to try and get a date again for my gentlemen from my panel. It seemed like Monday works for us a little bit better than any other day. And they are back here on this evening. We're going to go around and ask everybody how they're doing and introduce or reintroduce them to you. Those, this is our fifth session, our fifth session in this series. Yeah, yeah, I was trying to count it up, guys. I'm like, wow, this is cool stuff. I'm loving it, I'm loving it, let's just roll with it, how the Lord says, roll with it. I got, I summoned, should I say that? I summoned my co-host from A and D Conversation to come in and help me out again. I am so glad for him. The Lord has really blessed our connection and this journey that we're on here on the radio journey. And Apostle, how are you doing?
I'm doing wonderful, Annette, how are you doing?
I'm doing good, I'm doing good.
You know, that promo was off the chain, but I don't know what was better, either the promo or the introduction. I mean, I felt like I was caught in the net for real. You worked that thing. You worked it, I'm like, look at her work.
Hey, try to do something, look, just a little something here.
Hey, you ain't trying, you doing it.
Well, oh, well, thank you so much, I appreciate that. And thank you again for coming in to co-host with me on this evening, this session. And so I'm going to maybe start up from my top right. We're going to go with the attorney, Attorney Jabari, how are you doing?
I'm doing well today, glad to be here, how are you doing?
I'm doing wonderful, I'm doing wonderful, I'm so glad you're here and back with us. And then also, we have Marcus Adams, how are you doing?
Oh, well, thanks for having me. Definitely loved the promo, loved the intro. Now we got to live up to number five, so I'm excited to make it happen. So I love it, thanks for having me.
Oh, thank you, thank you again for coming, for coming, I sure appreciate it. These young men are close to my heart too, so that's another reason why I've reached out to each of them. Matthew, MLA, how are you doing, sir?
Fantastic, so happy to be back. Excited to get into some great dialogue as always.
Yeah, yeah, I'm excited, I'm ready to. I am going to actually, let's see here. I'm getting others in right now, so I'm going to let them get themselves settled in. Apostle, can you do me a really huge favor and go ahead? Do you have your list in front of you?
I sure do.
Okay, can I have you start for me?
Do I have to go in order?
Yeah, you could, yes, please do.
Okay, okay. The new Biden-Harris administration, we're going to open up with that. The new Biden-Harris administration, what do you guys think about that? How do you feel about the diversity, the multiculturalism? All of those wonderful flowery words that are, you know, being used heavily in this time? What do you think about the administration? Is it living up to the expectation?
Well, I guess I'll start. As far as living up to the expectation, it's, well, the short answer, I would say is yes. But, you know, I think part of that is because the expectation from what we just left was so far below that anything that's going on now, you know, looks wonderful in comparison. So, you know, I think we were expecting a lot of them and they're going to have to deliver a lot. You know, I think we kind of get to the point where, you know, promises is, you know, we're tired of hearing promises every four years and, you know, things don't change. I'm pretty sure we're at the point where we're expecting to see change. And, you know, admittedly, they've come in at a big deficit, you know, with COVID and everything that's going on. And, you know, it's kind of seems like, kind of seems like that always happens when Democrats get into office, they come in at a deficit that they have to correct and then you got to go from there. So, you know, as far as how they're living up to it, it's kind of early to give a definitive answer to that. But, you know, I would say I'm fairly satisfied to this point.
Okay, okay, anybody else want to add to that?
I guess I'd go second. I think they are, but I think, you know, I agree with Jabari a lot. And that is, you know, the bar was so low. So like the fact that they, you know, can have a press conference without, you know, lying about, you know, the color of the drapes or, you know, just basic, simple things. You know, I mean, you know, it was amazing, you have the media say, hey, we're happy because we had a boring press conference. I mean, like, that's, that's the bar. I mean, literally, you know, a two-year-old could step over it. And, but, they still have, so you don't want to, you know, give them, you know, you don't want to take it away from them, you know, they've, they've done that. And I would say, you know, they've exceeded it, things are, it's, you know, it's hard to come in and clean up a mess. You know, anybody who's ever had to clean up after a party or something like that, you know, it's not just a normal cleanup, right? It's a lot. So to say that, you know, yeah, things are getting back to normal, you know, I guess they deserve credit for that. Are there more things that I expect as a voter who voted for the administration? Absolutely, you know, absolutely. This isn't the end, but I think all you can do is start correctly in that, I believe they've done.
I'll try to add something from a Gen Z or X or whatever generation you want to think about. Many of those generations, especially, I got a teenage daughter, and sometimes this was their first time. So I love how Jabari and John kind of took it from, they've seen historical trends of, from Republican to Democrat and vice versa, but there's a generation that hasn't seen that. So I think the visibility that they see optimism, they know, you know, Trump is a word now that's used as a, you know, whatever, you know, in their society, in their view and their lens. So I think to answer that question from that generation is, the expectations are there because the visibility is there now. You know, my daughter at 18 is now watching Kamala, you know what I'm saying? And understanding now the impact that she can have and the impact that Biden can have. So it's my job also as a parent to, to give them, you know, the view of what we see as far as trends, but it's also important for them to continue to watch. I think sometimes when you win, you just kind of be, all right, we won, I'll see y'all in four years. I think it's important to continue, you know, the attention of our younger generation, not just during the election, but continue to watch, continue to understand what was the plan the first hundred days, you know, and hold them accountable to it. So I just kind of, to Jabari's point, small sample size so far, but I just wanted to look at it from what I'm doing with my daughter and even my eight-year-old son, you know, to make sure that they're continuing to watch, not just cheering for the victory we had.
Yeah, do you guys think that, because one of the things that everybody's celebrating, if you look at the cabinet, if you look at the diversity of the cabinet, there's a rainbow of multiculturalism. And you were saying, Jabari, how, you were saying how representation is so essential. Not Jabari, but Marcus, you were saying how representation was so essential. Do you think that what we're seeing, because we were, we were kind of starved for the last four years of any form of justice and civility and all those wonderful things? Do you think that because in the first few months, we're seeing just a remnant of some of the things that we've wanted to see over the last four years, that our expectation can be even further watered down to where we're not holding this current administration accountable, you know, to a certain, to an acceptable degree? You know, you, 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 do you understand what I'm asking? I think sometimes we can be caught up in the fact that this is different. Yeah, we got somebody behind the wheel of this runaway train that was going, you know, in the wrong direction. Now that we have somebody with some sense behind the wheel, you know, are we just going to stop there? Or are we really going to hold this administration accountable for the next four years? I guess that's, you know, I wonder about that sometimes. How do you guys feel about that?
I'm a huge wait-and-see guy, just in anything. But when I think about, you know, what can you do in such a short timeframe?
Yeah.
I think one of the things that you can come in and make an impact on right away is put in representation in seats that have never been there before. Step two is, I don't want to diminish the accountability or the expectations on this administration because the previous administration was so bad. So that's where my wait-and-see kind of comes in and says, all right, you know, did they do what they could do with this short of timeframe right now? I think that answer is yes. But going forward, I still want to wait and see and still allow that accountability to be there because this is new. And there were promises made and there were conversations brought up from this administration. I do think it's fair to hold them to that. And I think they have to have time to kind of get to that. So I'm in wait-and-see mode.
I like the question though. I mean, this is, it's a standard of excellence that you have to have. And it doesn't matter where, what the deficit is. You know, you got to always play offense and not defense, you know, play to win and not play to lose. So I think it is important for us to, like Matthew said, you know, wait and see, but, you know, really put them to those, you know, those things. Now, obviously, there's some lofty things out there that we got to, they have to work through. But it's so important, like I said earlier, to hold them accountable and really just kind of see where they land. But the wait-and-see is for sure, I'm with you on that one, Matthew. But I would definitely say it has to be a standard of excellence. It can't just be, this is good enough and that'll do.
Guys, this is sounding good to me. Apostle, thank you for taking that first question for me. And of course, I always love to hear from each of you. Now, I wanted to, I did want to say before I got started is, I'll be a little bit transparent with you. When I was putting together the promo and I say, and I put in there, I said, we want to hear from our black man. And then I said, well, maybe I shouldn't say that, but, no, that's the whole purpose for this IFTD series. Because it's given you a platform to speak. It's given you a platform to voice your opinions on everything that's going on. And I, for one, because of who I am, want to hear from you all. And I, and obviously, others want to hear from you as well. Too oftentimes, your voices are taken, you know, so to speak. Whether it's, you know, you being stopped, you know, by a cop, whatever, what have you. So that, I wanted to say that. Now, you guys gave some very good and wonderful responses to that first question. I do want to piggyback off of that myself, because I want to ask you maybe a second layer question to that. But let me read this comment, I see you Apostle Rogers, you've stopped in, I appreciate you. His comment is, "Representation should mean more than the visual. We need legislative representation in terms of economic development, educational development, and political empowerment. I haven't seen any black man being tapped for any cabinet positions other than the military." Now, that's a, that's a loaded statement, and I see your faces. Who wants, who wants to respond to that?
I guess I'll do the first one. So I think this is one of the, one of the challenges that this administration is going to have. When you think about the Democratic Party and the political quote-unquote "big tent", it's going to be, there's more than one group when you start talking about equity and representation that you're trying to capture. So you're going to have, you know, Hispanic males, African-American males. We know that there's, you know, gender representation that this administration is looking at. You know, there's minority females. And then also Caucasian females, you have all these. So it's going to be, you know, they're going to have to pick and choose as they put and try to make sure they cover every gambit under the tent in their, in their area. And then number two, the original point about legislation, once again, it's the same thing. You have, you know, some people are going to be pushing for, you know, energy. Some people are going to be pushing, you know, when you've got the big tent, you've got all of these things. So people are going to be pushing and say, hey, social justice was a big part of it. You know, where is the police reform legislation? Where is, you know, other, you know, social reforms? And others are looking at financial reforms for colleges. So, you know, you've got a whole lot of people that are not in line saying that my legislation needs to be first on the docket. In the meantime, you know, they're not looking at any kind of, you know, super majority in the Senate or the House. So, you know, even trying to get things passed is going to be, is going to be difficult. So this administration, I mean, we, and this isn't to let them off the hook. We still expect and demand these things. But the landscape that this administration is looking at with narrow majorities, particularly in the Senate, and with so many things that they have to deliver on, because their base is so broad, is putting them in a tough spot. You know, no matter what they tackle first, they're going to have four other groups saying, hey, where's ours? So, yeah, yeah, it's going to be tough.
Wow.
Not to mention the whole other side. And I don't want to keep making this be Democratic and Republican, but, but you know, not to mention, there's a whole other side that's just waiting for the slightest slip up, just like they were back in 2016, you know, to pounce again. So it's, it's, it's going to be very tough, very, very challenging for them.
Yeah. Okay, anyone else want to tackle that one or are y'all good?
I mean, I just like how John brought it to attention. You got so many agendas, you know, when you think about the environment, education, police reform. You got so many things, immigration, you know, you got so many things that don't, you know, you just got to really, to Matthew's point earlier, you kind of got to wait and see how you can prioritize and, but then still show the public or the people that I got you, what I promised you, I have what you. So it definitely is a balancing act, because there's so many priorities and people want their priority to be top, right? So I would definitely agree, you got to really, you know, pace it out, because that's tough. That's tough to really manage through all of them.
And especially in comparison with the former generation, former administration, rather. Their agenda was pretty much, you know, keep the same people in power, keep the rich people rich, you know, keep this country, from a visual standpoint, you know, traditional, you know. And so when you flip the script, you know, there's so many, so many different, there's a vast diversity now that's expecting something, just as you guys were saying from this administration. It can put a lot of pressure on them, a lot of pressure.
Wow.
So I'm a big, just one quick thing, I'm a big believer in like, you know, not just pointing out problems, but also recommendations. And I don't know if the administration is watching right now. I mean, you know, I know this is a big-time program, so if they're tuning in, my recommendation, I mean, I would, I would start with the social justice. I mean, police reform, education reform, I think should be the, should be the start. Both of those things, access to quality healthcare with the pandemic, those should be your top three things. They disproportionately impact minorities. So you're talking about areas that we would, as a community, would see, would reap the benefits of, but it also helps the country at large. Because anybody, you know, can be abused by people in power. So I would start there. Those are also things where you should be able to, because, you know, like you said, it's not a vacuum. You should be able to get at least some support across the aisle, you don't need a lot. You know, just a handful, three or four. And so I would start with that. And then from there, after I've stacked wins and I've got a little bit of, you know, a little bit of extra cred, now I can go after some of the other things. Immigration and the environment are going to be, you know, huge battles. And so then that's what I would, I would hit those next. So, you know, once again, you know, I don't know if they're looking for advice, but that's where I would start.
Yeah, they are watching.
They're watching.
Yeah. They're always watching.
Matthias has joined us and we appreciate you, how are you feeling this evening?
I'm doing well. Once again, it's just an honor to be on with you all. And Annette, it's an honor to be on the show, so I appreciate you. And you know, I love you as well, Apostle Han as well, I appreciate you all.
Oh, thank you, I felt that love, thank you so much. Marcus, what are you saying, that he's doing too much? Is that, was that?
Yeah, he had the eye on his shirt for the show, you know what I'm saying?
He always tease them, that brotherly love there, that brotherly love. You have just now joined us, I'm going to kind of maybe pick on you a little bit. You've maybe been listening to us, Matthias. But we started off talking about the new administration. And my, I'm going to skip to my question now, okay? Because my question, I want to ask, I have all gentlemen here tonight, yay. So my question, okay, we have a, we have a VP that looks like me in the White House. I want to know your honest and be transparent, your thoughts on Lady Harris, Lady Harris, get it? Just kidding, no, seriously, I want your, I want your thoughts on her appointment. I want your thoughts on what you think that she's going to accomplish. And be honest with me, did this do anything to your manhood, if you would? Making you, hey, I'm throwing it all out there. Did you think, oh, I want a woman over me? You know, or what are your thoughts, you know, on it? Talk to me, I see some heads. I'm going to start with, I'm going to start with Matthias, that's what I said I was going to do. I was getting ready to go to Matthew, but I'm going to Matthias.
I mean, honestly, honestly, Annette, this is really just showing the state of America right now. It's about really trying to push past the norm, pushing past the biases, especially the gender biases as well. I'm really happy that Kamala Harris is on the team. I really think that she is going to help try to integrate some of these things about black women and them not being able to be in command and be in charge, being able to hold their emotions. But most importantly, she's inspired generations. I've never seen so many people and just younger, young girls that's inspired by a VP, like you said, that just looks just like them. So I think that's an amazing thing. I do, I believe she's, and I believe she's already going to step foot in the office and really make some impact. I'm expecting her to do some great things. I'm honestly kind of putting this out here right now. I think she's going to run, make a future run for, you know, for president. I mean, she's in a situation where she's, where she can do that, she's laying the groundwork for that. But I can't wait to see what she's going to do. I'm totally behind her as well. And it's just great to see, you know, a woman of color and not even just of African-American descent, just a woman of color really being in that office is really just a testament to show that anything is possible.
Yay, thank you, that was good, good response. Come on, Matthew.
I like to address what you were saying about some men saying they don't want a woman over them. I want to, and I really, I want to talk about it, and I've been thinking about this for the last two to three mornings in my quiet time. Is it the optics of VP that's causing so much angst? Because there are women judges, Congresswomen, women, like if a woman police officer pulls me over, I'm going to do whatever she tells me to do, just like a male police officer. You know, the same thing, the same respect. I really don't understand the difference with this one. Why is it this one? And my deeper question is, if you have more of a problem with this one and you never addressed any of the others, what's your real issue? Like, and we could just keep it solid. Now, if an individual has been solid across the board with, you know, women leadership, then, all right, that's a different conversation. But if you're just now having an issue with it because it's the VP, because it's in the White House? But if you're just now having an issue with it because it's the VP, because it's in the White House, like, we got another conversation we need to have. Your manhood shouldn't be that for real.
And, and somebody's camera went upside down when you said that?
And then, and then to add to that, the term second gentleman, like the ring of the term second gentleman. There, you would be surprised, there are some people who cannot handle that term.
But they were invited to the party, like, if he don't have a problem with it, like, come on, man, like, what grade are we at? This is so trivial.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it, it's crazy. I, it, it's, it's wild. So two things, one, I agree with Matthew. A lot of it is the same thing that I ask people when they get so angry about Obama. I'm like, we've had Democratic presidents before. Why is it that Obama made so upset? Like, there's always, you know, we, we vacillate back and forth all the time. Like, you know, it's only, you wait four to eight years and you're gonna have another Democrat president. Why was he, you know? So then that's that conversation. But then, like, I mean, let's, we, I just, you know, we just kinda have to be transparent. Um, in our culture, there is a respect for the mothers and the grandmothers in our African American households traditionally. Traditionally, you know, mom, so when I see a woman of color in a leadership position, I'm thinking, well, that's where they both, you know, it's about time. Like, you know, that's my expectation. You know, I've been, my whole life been surrounded by, you know, intelligent and strong, um, black women. My mother, my grandmothers, aunts, you know? I mean, I've seen examples. Um, so this is, this isn't a surprise to me, but I've, the vitriol that I've seen, particularly from other races and, and, and African Americans as well. We're not immune to it, but I've really seen a lot with other races, um, where it's like, I'm not listening to a woman. Like Matthew, you brought up the comment about if you see a woman police officer, you gonna listen to it 'cause she's a police officer. There are people who, when they see a woman police officer, they're angry. Like, why am I, you know, get a real police officer? You know, like, that's their, their mindset, you know? And I think that was one of the reasons why there was a lot of anger about this ticket, even now. Um, Matthias, you mentioned that you believe she's gonna run and be president. You already have the other side who, they're not even bothering to attack Biden. They spent all their energy attacking the vice president. Why it, like, why are, why is your attention on the vice president? She's not even in the chair yet, and you already on team. Like, you know, she's just in the chair next to the chair. It's, it's, it's crazy.
Let me add this though, but you also have those individuals who are, are saying and have said, Biden is not gonna be running, the, the country, that's, it's Kamala gonna be running that, you know? So that, that's their mentality, and I think that's probably why they can't separate. You know what I mean?
And, yeah, yeah, and then we, we just got one out four years ago. You know, now we setting ourselves up for another one.
Right.
Yeah.
Individuals, and I'm trying to be, uh, wise with my words here, who just could not handle Barack in there. They could not, excuse me, former President Barack Obama in there. They, they, they could not handle him. Um, and, and they let it be known. Um, then one of our other questions is gonna kinda get to that as well. I'm trying to hold off on that, which is, uh, others check in. But, um, yeah, they, they let it be known that they did not, uh, want him there. And they, I mean, seriously, just really, really, uh, mad about it, if, if I can say it like that. And I'm, I'mma leave that there, 'cause I'mma say something I don't wanna say. All right, let me, let me do this.
What, okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I can, I can do so.
Yes, ma'am.
Don't lose your thought.
Okay.
I, I just want, I just wanna recognize a few people, that's all, before we, we get going. 'Cause I, I always appreciate those coming in, Janetta and Karen. Uh, Winford Hayes is watching, we appreciate you. Um, there were some comments down here, so I'm gonna scroll down. Um, I do see you Sabrina and Linda Lyles Daniels, we appreciate you. Thank you for coming in tonight. Um, Elder Kevin McGee is on, I already read, uh, Apostle Roger's comment, Beverly Brown. Thank you. Janetta, did I say you? If I did, I see your name like, I don't know, fifty times in here, but thank you. I appreciate you, little sister, for coming in on tonight. Shannon Greer, um, did mention on the question we had before, said the plum book is still being filled. So hopefully, there will be more black men appointed. Um, yeah, we're all hoping that. Buddy Gil says, good evening, gentlemen and the lady, I appreciate you. Thank you for coming in. Um, Brandy's comment, Vice President Harris scares people so much because she's a Biden hospital visit away from being Madam President. See, we just said that. How do you know you wrote, wrote that here?
She said it nicely.
Yeah, she wrote. Folks aren't looking at who she is now, but who she has the large potential to become. See, I agree with that. Um, Beverly, uh, Sister Beverly, uh, Jeffries, thank you for watching, we appreciate you, thank you. Um, another comment from Apostle Roger says, as black people, we refuse to really embrace the power of white supremacy and the fear they have of losing power. We keep trying to integrate without a full vetting of the danger we find ourselves in. That's interesting. Anybody wanna touch on that? Still don't lose your thoughts, Jabari. Anybody wanna touch on that?
Martin Luther King said one time, I fear that I am moving my people into a burning house. I'm, I said that word wrong, but I, that resonates with that comment you just read. Um, trying to integrate, trying to combine without a full understanding of what you're getting into can be problematic. That's just what came up when I heard that.
That's true.
And, and so, uh, a lot of truth to it, to, to be honest.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Uh, Jabari?
Yeah, well, I still remember my thought and it kinda dovetailed over what, uh, Apostle was talking about with traditions and this country. And, you know, the way I look at things now, the way I look at the previous administration, the way I look at how things are going with demonstrations and all that now, it's kind of like the last gasp of, you know, the, the, the older, the, the white males who have run this country since its inception and before its inception. You know, it's getting to the point where, if not by sheer numbers, but by our, um, you know, our efforts, that the white male is not going to be in power, you know, ten, twenty, thirty years from now, or not solely in power, I'll just say. And I think they can see that now and they, you know, those who hold on to those old notions can see that and they're scared and, you know, they're petrified. Even though, to me, and I'm sure, I guess to most of you, diversity makes everything better and different ideas, different, you know, thoughts makes everything better, no matter what you're talking about and that would make this country better. Obviously, they don't feel that way, and this is kind of their last gasp of holding on. And I, I say that to, you know, you, we were talking about, you know, when President Obama got in, well, why, why him? He, he's a Democrat. Why, why the, the victory off towards him? And, you know, if you go back to, um, the, uh, the, um, when everybody was running for president, the Democratic, um, you know, the primaries and all that, you know? Um, at that time, Senator Harris caught it worse than anybody, at least in, in, you know, in my view. She, you know, she caught her, her past was brought up at nausea more than, than anybody else's. And, you know, any quote unquote mistakes that she made was brought up. And, you know, she ultimately had to get out before things really got going, you know? Biden got in late and, you know, he ended up winning. I mean, but, you, you know, it, it, it just, you know, she caught it, you know, worse than anybody, at least to me. And I think a lot of that was just, you know, people were so scared and, you know, you know, how is she gonna be the leader of this country? You know, she looks nothing like George Washington. She looks nothing like Abe Lincoln, you know? She looks nothing like Franklin Roosevelt. How is she gonna do it?
They haven't seen Hamilton?
Right. You know?
But yeah, you know, I mean, so, I mean, that was, that's just my whole thing. I, you know, I just think you have a lot of very, um, afraid people. And, and, you know, you got a lot of people who are, have been backed into a corner. And, you know, those are the most dangerous type of people. I don't know if you're gonna touch on that later, but, you know, those are the most dangerous type of people and,
Yeah.
you know, and I think that's what we got, that's what we're dealing with here now.
Yeah.
You know what, Jay, I think that's a, a huge point. And I, I, it actually ties really closely to what, um, Matthew was saying when he was, uh, quoting, you know, MLK. The reason why they're afraid, it's not really because of, I believe, it's not really because it's like diversity and they have to share this and that, is that they have been able to live, and when I, when I say they, I, I, I'm referring to, uh, Caucasian, uh, men, uh, and to some extent Caucasian women. Um, they have been able to lie to themselves that racism isn't real. You know, um, the mistreatment of minorities isn't real. The mistreatment of those that are not, um, in, you know, uh, quote unquote mainstream society or quote unquote true Americans is not real. But when they see that all of a sudden those people now have power, the real fear is that they will begin to be treated how they were treating people. See, to me, the fear comes from the reality that they're able to ignore when they're in power, that when they're out of power, they're like, uh-oh, now I'm gonna be treated how white people have been treating minorities. And I don't want any part of that, and I'm gonna fight tooth and nail to make sure that my white son, you know, is able to walk home in the neighborhood by himself without getting harassed by police. Or that my, you know, this or my that, that is really what they're afraid of. They're afraid of end up being treated like, you know, they're the minority. And then the reality of what that would mean starts to set in. And, and, and that's where I believe as we continue to push and progress as a country, and once again, it's not fair, but I think it, it always falls on, uh, the minorities in this country. We have to be careful that we don't then become our oppressors as we begin to take power. And we lead the right way once we come into power. Um, and so, and we showed it, you know, you don't have anything to be afraid of, 'cause I'm not like you. I'm, I'm actually gonna respect you as a human being, you know? Um, but I, but it's tough. I mean, hey, when you've been under that, when you've had somebody's foot on your neck for long enough and you get a chance to stand up, you wanna kick them a little bit. And so, you know, that's something that we, you know, as, as, as that diversity kicks in, we're gonna have to remember, you know, uh, and that's really what they're afraid of, I think.
Wow. Uh, John, you just hit on something that wasn't even in my notes, you know, about, um, being careful when we do get in, in position. You know, not to, um, uh, do the same thing they, they've done. But then you were, you were transparent, you said, but it's hard, you know? And I'm, I'm sure that anybody could attest to that. Um, save or not, I mean, I'm not saying you ain't safe, you know what I'm saying? It's just, you, you, you think about it. Um, Marcus, what would you say to that? What, what, what are your thoughts on that?
Uh, I mean, you, you talk about being saved, so let me go to the spiritual side first. You know, that Jesus was the ultimate person that showed us how persecution doesn't always go back with the, you know, with, with, with what's going on. So I mean, I think the ultimate grace is where we go with first, you know, the spiritual grace that we may have. And then I, I, obviously, I mean, it, it, to, to John's point, I mean, if it's been happening to you, you get that power, you like, hey, I can go back to me and Matthias's childhood. When he took my toy, when I got big enough to take his toy, I made it happen, you know what I'm saying? So I think it, uh, I think it comes down to that, but I think it definitely gets down to the grace. I mean, but, so I, I would, I would stay on the spiritual side and say, what would Jesus do? You know, and, uh, but, but, but I definitely, uh, I definitely appreciate that. That's a, that's a huge point though, uh, John, uh, that we have to act with the grace. And, and that, that, that also goes back to, you know, your original question with Kamala. I mean, when I, when I saw her walk off that plane with, with that designer jacket on, I'm like, that girl mean business. You know what I'm saying? I'm just, so if you're gonna ask me a man's perspective, I'm like, man, she, she looked good, you know? Like, so, I mean, and then you, you saw Michelle, you know, the same designer, you know what I'm saying? They was rocking, you know, and they, they did their little, you know, they lived their little thing. I mean, it, it shows the unity though, that, hey, we're gonna get here. Michelle said it, when they go high, we go low, when they go low, we go high. So it's that, she's already set that precedence, that foundation on that. So I say, kinda use that Michelle term, you know, understanding where we're at. Um, and, and, and that, and, and to John's point, we're, we're here to, to be human. You know, we're gonna treat you as human, we're gonna be where we need to be. But, uh, it, it's definitely difficult not to, uh, leverage a power like I did to Matthias, you know what I'm saying? You know, when you get it, you know, but it is, 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 is difficult. But I, I would say, use Jesus's grace on that.
You know, I'm telling them, Matthias, he has so much patience.
Somebody need to send that man an offer.
Uh, that, that's, thank you for your response. Uh, a little comical there, but true, true nonetheless. Um, I, I, I will say this, and I know I've asked you gentlemen about your, your feelings on, on the new VP, but, um, I, it did not hit me, her position and what she was doing, until she took her walk and then she walked up the stairs, I started bawling. I'm like, this is real. I mean, it wasn't what she did, we know she took her oath, it wasn't then. She did her walk, her, uh, her and her husband down the street with her family, and she walked up those stairs. I was like, she's home. You know what I mean? And it just, I, and I started, I was clapping like crazy, like I'm there, right? I'm just clapping. I couldn't stop clapping, and I'm crying, and I'm just clapping. But it, it just hit me, um, that, you know, that this, this has happened. Um, and, and I'm grateful, uh, that it has. Um, let me see, Buddy Gil says here, there are many African American women in leadership who scare the people with their realness and intellect. It may even be safe to say that they, uh, may be able to accomplish many things that our African American men were unable to accomplish. Uh-oh, watch out now. In my experiences, I have seen these sisters push the line and make it happen in various positions. Thank you for that comment. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm with you on that. Of course I would be, but, uh, I don't know if anybody, uh, doesn't agree with that comment. You all agree with that? Yeah.
I think, I think about Esther and how she was able to accomplish something in the, the, the space that she had, the opportunity that she had. Um, it wasn't something a man could have done. We needed, it had to be a woman in that place, if you read the book. It had to be a woman, and she was able to accomplish something and to free and liberate. Um, and that hadn't happened before. Some things done that hadn't happened before. So that's, that's actually biblical if you wanna look at it that way.
Okay, all right.
That, that's just the opportunity to, to bring up that instance, there's more, but.
Can I add to that? Have you seen this woman cross-examine somebody? Oh my God, when she got somebody on the stand, when she has them on the stand and she's cross-examining them, uh, it's, it's, it's a sight to see. She crosses every T and dots every I. And, um, I think that America is better with her in that seat. And to go along with what you guys were saying, it's definitely fear, but doesn't the fear on the other side kinda revi- reveal the gaslighting? The gaslighting over the years of them saying, there's no racism, there's no, there's no bigotry, there's no this or that. But then when the shoe or when the tables are turned, now you fear that, that the other side is gonna do something that, that mirrors what you have been doing all along. So we're right, we're definitely right there. Um, and just to throw another curveball real quick, I've heard, uh, a- Um, and just to throw another curveball real quick, I've heard, uh, Annette, I've heard some black men take issue with, with Kamala being in that seat. And even pointing out the fact that uh, her husband is Caucasian. I've, I've heard some people trip over that. You know, and it's just, uh, you know, I don't know what that is, to be honest. I can't, I can't add no insight to that. But I've just heard that, and it's just another piece of, you know, to, in, in, another ingredient to throw into the, into the mix, you know?
Right. Interesting. Hmm. Okay, okay. Um, David, I'm gonna throw a little humor in here with this comment from Apostle Rogers. He said salvation. He said, which kind of salvation are we talking about? That they prophesied Trump would be president kind?
Lord have mercy.
The African angel salvation?
Right, right.
From Africa and South America?
Right, like, oh my goodness. Um, let's see, questioning the ability of the black man without quantifying the real strategies to suppress our ability and elevation in the seats of authority. Gosh, he said he wished he was on the show. That's Apostle Rogers. Uh, yeah, this is, this, this is deep. It, it, and it will take you, sometimes these questions will kinda take you a little bit further um, than, than, than where you originally started, but this is, this is why we're here. And then you guys, if you're just not joining us, again, this is the IFTD series, I fit the description series, this is number five. Um, uh, the number five session that we've had thus far. And um, this one, the subtopic is after the inauguration, and we're talking to these wonderful uh, gentlemen on this evening. I have my co-host here helping me out. Uh, Marcus, I see you've come in, thank you so much, uh, my friend, uh, for joining us on tonight. You guys make sure, again, click that share button, click the share button. What do I always say, Apostle?
It don't cost you nothing.
Zero, cost you nothing, cost you nothing. Alright, yeah, so that, that's good stuff, and that way others will know, that, cuz this is a different night, it's a special night um, that we're on, and so many are not used to seeing my face on a Monday evening. Um, but we're doing this thing, we're doing this, and I'm enjoying each and every one of you thus far. I wanna move, Apostle, you wanna move to the next? Are you with me?
I'm with you.
Okay.
Um, you had the last, last question. Oh, oh, so it's my turn, I get, I get, I get it.
Yeah.
Amanda, Amanda Gorman. I'm with you, Annette, I'm with you.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
How do you guys feel about Amanda Gorman, uh, the young lady that spoke at the inauguration?
I mean, to me, to me, she just embodied like the pure essence of articulation. I mean, she was just up there, she was poised. Um, I mean, and just very confident, but she was able to, to just to deliver a message that really kinda resonated with the people. I would say, I was excited that she got that opportunity, but I was even more excited that she got the opportunity in the Super Bowl to uh, to have another opportunity to speak. And I just think that her, 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 her personality, her brand, and what she represents is really, um, really kinda connecting the American people um, is, is, as well. So uh, but yeah, I thought, I thought she did, just, just overall, just did an amazing job uh, with presenting herself and presenting her, uh, her piece, you know, during the inauguration.
Yeah.
You know, my, oh, I was gonna say, my biggest thing with her was actually, I mean, she did a phenomenal job, you know, spoken word, know that, but it was after, like, you wanna talk about somebody who was so prepared
Yeah.
that when the moment happened, she wasn't just in position for that moment. She had prepared for everything that was gonna come after that moment. She actually, I don't know if any of you got a chance to see her when she was interviewed, I believe it was Anderson Cooper who interviewed her on CNN. And they were asking her questions, and how poised she was in the answering of the questions. And just, you know, being able to speak about multiple topics just off the cuff showed you someone who had, who had dedicated her young life to not only her craft, but for this moment. And I mean, you wanna talk about an amazing young lady. If you haven't seen the interview, you've gotta watch it, it's so impressive. She actually talked about how, um, how she even got into doing spoken word. I think she had a, a speech impediment. And as a matter of fact, there's a letter that she can't, that she still has some trouble saying that was either H or L or something, it, that came up a lot in the hill we climb, or was it W's? I can't remember. It was the interview. R, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and she was saying how, she said it, she had to say it so many times in the speech. And it was just, she is just phenomenal, and that, I, I just, man, when, you know, chance meets preparation, you know, I, you know, that's, that's what I see when I see her, and it's, it's amazing. Yeah.
Cool, cool, cool. Um, Mark, you are, oh, no, there are two of you on here that have girls. Um, so uh, what, what were your thoughts towards Amanda in, in reference to your own um, young ladies that you are raising? I'll start with Marcus, and then I see Michael has joined us, so Michael, you can answer as well.
It's, it, it was unique. Um, I grew up in a house with just two boys. Um, so, you know, to be able to touch, I mean, my daughter's eighteen as of last week, so um, and, and I got another daughter coming in the next two months, so uh, man, I, 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 y'all see my gap, but it's definitely uh, impactful for me to give her a bar, a, a, a bar to set. And then, of course, and, and, and it's artistry. I mean, my daughter, my daughter has artistry in her, you know, she's, she's very gifted in many ways. And I tell her, this is where, to, to John's point, opportunity meets preparation, you know, and you know, that's where, that's where I was really going with her is, don't, you, this is one of the biggest stages, and then to, to my brother's point, to be able to, to translate that to another stage, you know, uh, and, and continue to, to, to just have your image and your brand uh, solidified. That was huge for me, uh, to be able to just continuously watch that. I mean, I'm in that mode, and communication for me is so important, and I was talking to my daughter about that. Being able to communicate, articulate, and really have, you know, purposeful conversations, intentional conversations. So for me, it was a bar set, I'm telling you, because um, oftentimes, I mean, my daughter, I mean, coming through this age group, you know, the Cardi B's is, 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 is the, is the bar, you know, and I had a woman that was dressed properly, uh, could talk, uh, articulate, you know, and, and, and was educated and was prepared. And uh, was still, still had that swag, you know, so I think it was, it was important for us to see that, and, 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 and man, it was, it was just amazing. And for me, um, as a father, it is just, it, it was different, because I didn't have sisters, I mean, I had cousins like Annette, but I didn't have sisters, you know, growing up, that, that I really could tap into that side. So I mean, my, 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 this, this was, this was huge, and I, I'm looking for more uh, opportunities on this. She, she did amazing.
Yeah. I think this is another um, situation of how diversity in the country, in this country helps, you know, helps the country, you know, to what, well, the inauguration was a month ago or two months, you know, two months ago, we didn't know, well, I didn't know about her, you know, and, you know, she was magnificent, and and if, if, you know, if this was the same old, same old, we wouldn't have known about her, and we wouldn't have seen her at the Super Bowl. And, you know, and not to diminish anything that she's done by one iota, but you know, there's other black women, girls out there who can do the same, you know, we just, we haven't seen them. And, you know, if this country would have stayed at the same norms, we would have never seen them. You know, for the most part, you know, you, you'd get your one or two, you, you know, but I, I mean, it's, it's, you know, she's just another example of, you know, if, you know, you let your people grow, you let your people flower, you know, it, I mean, so much talent out there, and, and, you know, that, that's, it makes everybody better, you know, it makes all of us better, and, you know, she's just a shining example of that.
Yeah, for sure. Uh, Michael, you're, you've, you're on, I see your name. Are you, oh, okay. Can you talk though? Um, I don't know if he's gonna be able to show his via, but can you talk to us?
Hey, how's it going, everybody?
Hey, hey, hey.
I, I do apologize for coming in late, but it sounds like it's been a fruitful, very invigorating discussion already. It's good to see everybody faces.
Although we can see yours, but that's okay.
Great, 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 great. But no, um, just Amanda, like, I wanted to piggyback off of what Marcus was saying, like, you know, I've got two girls, one's about to be seven years old, and the other one's not, about to be nine months, it's crazy how time is flying. Like, I, I, I was doing some of the earlier, I fit the descriptions, and she was on the way or just getting here, I forgot when we first started, so it's amazing how time is flying, man. But anyway, um, it was such an inspirational, I think inspirational doesn't even do it justice, honestly. It was, it's an understatement, and you know, one thing that I kept going back to on, you know, the way that that was uh, portrayed was like, I felt like she said all that needed to be said in that moment. And it was the perfect precursor, almost, um, you know, not to always take it back to a church analogy, but it was like the, the word before the word, you know what I'm saying, you know, you get little inspirational message from the youth pastor, or you Sunday before the, before the preacher get up, you know, like, it was like the perfect, in my opinion, it was the perfect um, segue to what Biden needed to say, you know what I'm saying? And I felt like, I was actually, oh, we're, going back, can you also hear me?
Yes.
I was looking at the one part that really hit me, cuz this is what I kept saying, we, we made both the girls watch it real time, uh, but it was, it was interesting, because she said in one part of it, um, she said, it's because being America, American is more than a pride we inherit. It's the past we step into and how we repair it. She said, we've seen a force that would shatter, would, would shatter our nation rather than share it. Would destroy our country if it meant delaying democracy. And this effort very nearly succeeded.
Yeah.
But while democracy can be periodically dena- delayed, it can never be permanently defeated.
Wow.
It was, it was, it was, that was so powerful to me. Not just speaking to the, the stuff that happened weeks prior, but just, to me, she said everything, her, like, as she said, this, her, in her skinny black girl frame, she spoke to the nation way more than any white man could in that moment. And that's what made it so powerful to me. And that's what honestly inspired, you know, like Marcus said, we, we've got creativity flowing through all of our families, and, and to see someone like that show her creativity on such a grand scale so flawlessly, you know what I mean? That, that's what my wife went to school for, and that's what we've been trying to teach Athena with public speaking now, like, you gotta come and share your voice to the world. So to have a real, live example of that, it, it meant so much more than just the words she was reciting. To me, it, like I said, it, um, it just inspirational, doesn't even do it justice.
Wow. Yeah, um, thank you. Apostle, you should, did you wanna say something, Apostle? You are mute.
I'm in agreement with what he said. I mean, it was, it was so beyond inspirational, it was monumental, it was, it was historical. And, and black women from young to old just looked so wonderful on that day. I was so proud of, 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 of our black women and the representation that was shown on that day. So it was phenomenal for me.
Okay, alright. Uh, Michael, you said something as you were talking, um, and it kinda was gonna help me to segue into my next point, cuz I wanted to, um, many of you know, with January sixth, Michael was working that day. Um, so I kinda wanted to kinda talk about that, because you mentioned that in her speech, she kinda summarized basically, like, the weeks prior. You know, we know some of the things that she was referring to. Um, so I kinda wanted maybe have, uh, Michael start talking about January sixth as much as he can, whatever he's able to, um, because you were there in the thick of it, um, and what that day, you know, meant to you personally, and, you know, otherwise, uh, maybe you can start there for us, Michael?
Yes, for sure. Um, I, 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 um, it was the, the, let me, let me start by saying, like, you know, I'm sitting there, kinda going back to the inauguration day, and one of the things that made it emotional for me was that I didn't, honestly didn't think that that day would come. Uh, I thought it was way too many security, um, um, let's just say hurdles and obstacles that they needed to climb, as well as just functional obstacles with the actual, like, literal damage that was done to that side of the Capitol. I honestly didn't think it would happen. Um, and then symbolically, you know, not, of course, you know, there are other ways, people were, have rumors that they were gonna do a private ceremony, or the swearing in was gonna take place somewhere else, or, you know, as long as democracy went through, it was fine, they didn't care about symbolism. But one things that made it so important, made it so special, you know, for me, was I was not only able to, um, the, the day was not only able to happen, but I was able to watch it, cuz they switched my work schedule, I thought I was gonna be working that day, they had me working overnight. Um, and I was able to come home like around six AM on inauguration morning. So I'm saying, I'd say, um, as you all, like, like, as, as, um, Annette shared, um, I was there on January sixth, working a double shift, and uh, as I kinda mentioned, anecdotally, the, uh, a couple people, the biggest lesson I learned that day was listen to your wife. Cuz she was one of the main people, she was the main person, like, Mike, you sure you wanna do this? You sure? Went from questioning to, babe, I don't know if you should do this, I don't know, and I'm like, it'll be cool, I'm gonna be in a secure area, secure area. The biggest thing that shook me was, on the morning of January, the afternoon of January sixth, there was no such thing as a secure area. Anywhere within the five mile radius of that Capitol. There was no such, I'm, I'm, not hyperbole, I'm, I'm not overstating it. I'm used to, ever since I've started working in the area of Washington DC, I'm used to being within one hundred feet of an armed security officer at all times, no matter where I am, walking on the grounds of the White House, walking on the grounds of the Capitol. I've always been used to it. I've never been in a situation where I so, simply just un- unsafe and un, it was uneasiness about the, the situation in that day. So not to, I know a lot of y'all saw my post, thankfully, Annette shared it, uh, when I first posted it, but just a quick summary, I was, um, working for, um, CNN the morning of, early morning of, of that day, and it was supposed to be a lot of just, you know, normal congressional, um, you know, they were doing their constitutional duties, just going through votes and roll calls and all that. So we were go, we, I was originally posted inside of one of the Senate office buildings where we do live interviews. Um, I did that shift from three AM to one PM. Um, and again, not listening to my wife, when the opportunity came for, we call it double dip with another network, instead of me coming home at one PM, I'm like, okay, I'll go ahead and do a second shift for another network from two PM on to like probably ten, maybe midnight, whatever. So I do that occasionally, just, let's be honest, for the money, you know, bring it home to bacon, why not bring a little extra sometimes and make everybody happy? So that's my, you know, thinking there or whatever, but honestly, uh, that, that was my biggest regret, because I, as I'm going, was as I'm leaving the first shift, and I found out my assignment was going not, I, I thought it was gonna originally be inside as well for the, for the second shift, when I found I was gonna be outside, wanna stay outside, just outside of that particular building, but still on the Capitol campus. I, 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 I up to that point had no idea like what was going on as far as news reports. I had a couple people like texting me, hey, they're trying to get in, they're trying to get in, but you gotta understand, the, the, the Capitol complex is so large and so vast, I don't know if any of you have even visited for a tour or anything like that. But it's so large and so vast, getting in or breaching in could mean one of many things, like, did they get on the grass? Did they, you know what I'm saying, there's so many fences and other things there, that, that could honestly mean anything. And even if they were able to breach a certain building, the actual Capitol dome, you know, the iconic dome that we know is in the middle, whereas me and my brother, actually, he was working that day too for CNN, we were on the outskirts of where, where the senators' offices are. That's a long half a mile walk or even a, a underground train ride away. So even if a couple of people are able to breach in, my heart still wasn't pounding, oh, oh no, they could be around the corner, cuz it just, it didn't, it was hard, the news reports were coming in so delayed, and I feel like honestly, the news media was taken back by surprise. So, long story short, long story short, as I'm leaving out of the building for my first year, I'm going to my car, because I'm hearing that I may be outside, so I'm like, let me go put on an extra layer, put on an, my thick coat. And, uh, just go get some coffee real quick and I'll be ready for the next shift. And as I'm going out, I hear the, uh, one of the cops at the door of the exit that I'm leaving out of, her, her walkie talkie was on blast, like, you know, come in, come in now. Like some of the, I don't know if you all watched some of the impeachment hearings last week. You could hear some of the radio chatter from, you know, officers. That's what I was hearing live over her radio. And like, I heard people yelling, where's that ambulance? I called for five minutes ago. We need it now. Officer down. Obviously, it felt like a movie. So it, it still didn't really click to me until she actually said, she looked around me and another guy that was leaving out, she was like, hey, y'all going anywhere? Y'all better stay away from that Capitol. And the guy said, huh? What are you talking about? She said, I don't know, but it's going, getting crazy over there. She said, you're not going near there, are you? And I was like, no, I'm walking the other way. So I was like, dang, it must be really getting kinda crazy over here. So I end up going and they assigned me to go over to the, um, the, uh, north side, like the northwest side of the Capitol. And I kid you not, it looked like the scene of a movie. I, I just keep going to that. It was a surreal feeling when you know it's not a movie, when you know it's real. When you hear explosions and you know it's not fake. Like when you, when you see people, I saw ropes over the side of buildings. Some of the pictures you've seen that, but seeing in real life, like, it felt like it was like in a pirate movie, like with Johnny Depp or something, you know what I'm saying? And they were like scaling the walls to, to go and conquer a building or whatever. And some of it was crazy because they could have easily just walked along the steps right next to it, but for whatever reason, these dudes came prepared. And one of the things that immediately hit me when I did eventually walk over there, not, it was not just me, I was with, um, uh, two other, three other colleagues and we had a security team of three. So we're all walking in a group of six or seven, um, at all times. And, um, even with my security team, I really didn't feel safe. But it's, it's crazy because, um, it's, it's crazy because as I walk up the hill to where I usually walk in every single morning that I go to the Capitol, walk up the same hill. And again, I'm used to being greeted by officers. I have to show them my badge. They let me into the initial area. I get scanned, I get wanted, I get everything, my, my stuff checked. I'm used to that. You know, strict level of security. I look up at the guard shack and people are ransacking the guard shack. They're, they're standing on top of it with, with all types of different flags. Some people are, are screaming and yelling, visibly, you know, snorting stuff. I mean, everything that you could think of and, and the, what, what got me was the sheer number of people. It had to be at least twenty to thirty, thirty thousand people on that side alone. For inaugurations, they put everyone on the, um, west side of the Capitol that, that faces like the Washington Monument and all that stuff. There's rarely anybody on the backside, because that's where the former president leaves out in a helicopter. If you remember with the Obamas, because that's the last time it actually happened correctly. Um, if you remember with the Obamas, Bush and his wife Laura Bush left out on the east side of the Capitol in a helicopter for Texas. And that was their final, you know, ride and all that. So here, here's why I mentioned that. On the, on the west side, all the people usually are, you see all the numbers of people and all that. Was it as big as, you know, Obama inauguration or March on Washington, something like, no, definitely not. But was it substantial? Yes. It was more people than Trump got for his inauguration. And that's one of the reasons why I feel like he was so empowered. Number two, the same amount of people that I saw on the west side was the exact same amount on the, on the east side of the Capitol, facing Supreme Court where it's usually empty. So I was easily surrounded by, I will say, close to a hundred thousand of these folks. And I don't care where.
I'm sorry, you still there, Mike?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I, I would easily say close to a hundred thousand of these folk. I was, there was nowhere that I looked where I couldn't see at least ten to twenty thousand of them in any, any particular direction. And again, the sense of dread that hit me was, I'm used to certain areas being courted off or there being some type of order to the chaos and at least, or I can know, I run this direction towards Union Station, I'll be okay. I run this direction towards my, uh, bureau office. I could cut through this alley above. No, everywhere you looked, there was somebody there. And that's what, that was the first thing that kinda made me like really uneasy. Next thing you know, I'm getting, my phone is blowing up. People from Chicago, people from DC, people from all over the place. Mike, are you okay? Mike D, you good? Facebook, texts, calls. The only call that I, I honestly was able to consist, consistently pick up with my wife. And I'm glad I kept her on the phone because cell service was down in that area, because all these people were streaming themselves, doing all this crazy mess. So we virtually had no cell service around at all. And that's actually something we need. I don't know if you all noticed some of the initial coverage, a lot of those videos from on the ground were very pixelated. Because our cameras weren't able to get the signal strength to even, you know, broadcast it to the networks. That shows you the sheer amount of people. So when you hear people, I'm, again, saying all this to kinda debunk some of these myths. You hear people say, oh, a few insurrectionists or, oh, a few, a few bad apples. No. This was a battalion or whatever you call it, not in the military. This was a, a legion of close to a hundred thousand people. All with one mission in mind. And I heard them. I, 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 I saw them. I, I, they, 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 thank God, some of the, the attacks and, and you know, ill will and the, the racist treatment was, was, let's just call it mild at best. I had people accost me and, you know, you know, yell the N-word at me and stuff like that, but it wasn't, it, it didn't become, thank God, it didn't escalate. You get what I'm saying? To where, you know, it was, it was bad. I'm not even gonna downplay it, but thank God, they were more focused on hanging my pants. I, I actually heard them saying that, you know what I'm saying? I actually saw people, you know, I'd say in my post, I, 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 I saw people cutting themselves. I saw people defecating in front of me. And that, that's, that's what shows you, these people were animals, man. I don't care what nobody says. They tell us to get over slavery, but they can't even get over the fact that they do, they do laws.
Right.
These people were legit animals. And what, what, whatever would make you wanna even express your thoughts like that, it, it's, it's beyond me. But, uh, you know me, I stretch, put on a straight face for the next couple of days. I tried to, you know, oh, I, I'm okay, I'm good. And I had a talk with, with, with two people. This whole time I'm experiencing this, my brother, he's on the inside, literally locked down, because the first and many bomb threats and, and bomb scares that happened were in the building that he was actually and I just, thank, thank God, he's, he was okay, like, you know. They, they found pipe bombs in the building that he was in. And, and, and so after hearing his story, and then after hearing my, one of my colleagues, she actually, um, good friend of mine, we met and worked together at the White House a number of years. She actually shot at my wedding. Uh, she's a war winning photographer. She was in, um, and I won't tell all of her story, but she was in basically a, a let, little known, less known area of the Capitol. And she was in one of the congressman's secret offices that did not have his name on it. And like, no one would basically know unless you're a staffer or, you know, someone in the know on the hill, no one would know, you know, where it is and how to access it. She was in his office with some of his staffers. And the only reason why they let her in, because her cousin used to be a staffer for, for his office. So they recognized her basically. Um, she goes in there, they barricade themselves, there was three different doors, a ways to get into that office. They barricaded themselves in there and sitting there for hours. Lights off, windows closed, TVs on but on mute. And every twenty minutes or so, they get banging at the door. We know you're in there. Come out. Who's in there? She said she saw her life flash before eyes multiple times. I, to, to hear her harrowing story of, 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 as she said, sometimes, you know, we, we get lost in this political world. You know, you, you heard the impeachment managers talk about the, 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 the booms on the door and things that, those sounds is, it's almost like you can't articulate it correctly, you know what I'm saying? And as you all know, like, I, I've been blessed to where I've had that many hero experiences in my life. You, you, everybody knows the, the, uh, the tighty wighty story with the water rapids. That pales the comparison, but the reason I bring that up is, you know, when, when you do have those types of experiences, it's like your brain is on like, super slow mo speed. It's all I can really, or, or I can really, uh, explain it with, where you remember every little detail. And it's because honestly, your body is preparing just in case you go out of here. So like to hear her talk about how she remembers hearing the, these huge thirteen foot oak doors and you could hear the crackling in them as the people are trying to, uh, bust down the doors. And like I said, for me, I've never been in a war zone before, but to hear grenades and, 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 you know, smoke bombs and, and, um, uh, what do you call them? Flash grenades go off right in front of you? I've never experienced, I, I would never forget that film. So I know I said a lot, but at the end of the day, I keep asking myself, why? Like, what was this all for? You know what I'm saying? Like honestly, like what, what was all this for? And, and, and when you really think about it, I think someone touched on it earlier, you know? And even, even back to, you know, the Amanda Goran, um, Goran piece. There are folks in this country that are willing to die. And that's one thing that, last thing I, I'll say on this. I'm thankful, I feel like it was done by God, because I, I had a situation where we were out in a little bit of a rough area, out in the open. We were surrounded by our security, but we're still exposed in a couple of areas. And out of nowhere, it just kinda showed you how like cultish these people are. Um, out of nowhere, this guy grabs one of a bullhorn that was laying on the ground and starts yelling into it. F the media, F the media. And, and maybe fifty yards to our left was I'm a group of my colleagues from different networks. They're in this area called the swamp. Again, usually secure area. I usually parked my car right there and I was debating on whether I should or not that morning. So glad I did. I didn't, side note, I didn't even get a chance to get back to my car for forty eight hours after all this got, took place. I just took an Uber home at the end of the day, because, um, they set up FBI central, like literally surrounding my car. The parking lot to get into my cars. I, I couldn't get my car if I wanted to. But anyway, um, all of my colleagues are sitting there in the swamp, um, just doing their job. The guy with the bullhorn starts yelling, F the media, F them. We don't care about them. These guys are traitors. And he starts like whipping this crowd into a frenzy. So about maybe two thousand folks were still trying to barge into the nearest door that was over there where we were. And, you know, the police are fighting back. These folks were prepared. They had bear mace. I've never even like seen, I heard of bear mace, I've never seen it. That stuff is crazy. So like the police are using regular mace. They're using bear mace against them. But anyway, um, I, I, this, this guy whiffs these folks up into a frenzy and next thing you know, about five hundred of them come away from the door. They, 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 they finish, they're, whatever they're trying to do, and they immediately start like robots. Start walking straight towards the media surrounding them. They start breaking their tripod legs, ta- ripping the light stands down, pouring like water and mace all over the media. Somebody grabs a, a lighter and starts trying to set the, uh, gear on fire. It was absolutely crazy. And this is what made me feel like it was like a, a movie or a Bible story. Do you know those folks, all five hundred of those folks had to walk right past us, like literally right in front of us to get to the media on the other side of us? I like, I, and, and, and most of the people in my group were of color. Me and my cameraman and our correspondent, we're all people of color. So it was amazing that they walked past us to, to, to get there. So I'm saying, I'd say, like, we really look at this, you know, it's crazy that, it was, it was funny. I'm not even trying to be funny. I, I, I really fit the description at that mo- moment. And they walked past me. But, um, I'm saying all to say, we've got a faction in this country and then I said it before, I'll say it again. When you look at the crowd, a lot of them were training in like a big, uh, what do you call it? Um, mosh pit party type of situation. A lot of them were treating like, oh wow, yeah, look at where we are. Look at what we're doing. Let's show Nancy Pelosi who's boss. You know what I'm saying? But I would say about a good ten to fifteen percent of those people there were literally ready, came there, ready to die that day. And I feel like, you know, some people say lucky, I know nothing but Lord protecting his, his saints and his people there. Because if it had have been, I say, thirty, forty more percent of folks actually ready to go down for the cause that day, it would have been a serious bloodbath. I have no doubt about it. I overheard people talking about, you know, hey, right down the mall, the, the, the boys from the, uh, hills, the boys from West Virginia, they got ammo, they got such and such, they got tanks. Like, and if you look down the National Mall, there were just trailers and trucks just sitting there. And nobody knew what it was or what it was for. This really could have turned out bad. There's no doubt in my mind, it could have, but I, all I can say is thank God it didn't. And, and don't get me wrong, it, it was bad, but it, it really could have been worse.
Right. Well, Michael, I, I appreciate you sharing your, um, your account, um, uh, of what happened. And of course, your auntie was over here on her knees praying. I was praying. Um, uh, guys, kinda jump in with this. Um, I know he was actually there in the thick of things, but you know, I was trying to get, um, you know, your, your, your thoughts as well about January sixth and, you know, how it even relates to this evening's, um, you know, subtopic as well. I, I kinda wanna, I wanna hear from you guys on that. So I don't know who wants to start. Um, you know, with that, uh, I don't know if you wanna piggyback off of what he said, just give me your own thoughts and what have you. All of you all just like, man, did all that really happen? Um, come on, come on, uh, Apostle, why don't you start us off?
You know, it's amazing when you see stuff like that happen. Uh, and the details, uh, first of all, I thank God that he's okay. You know, that God covered him. Um, and his, um, the people that he worked with. Uh, but when you see stuff like that unfold and you hear him so vividly give his recount, uh, I was watching earlier, a police officer who happened to be African American who was working that day. And the many times that he was called the N-word, the many times that he was, uh, uh, heard racial e- epithets, uh, the, the, the many times that, um, he was assaulted even that they just doing his job. It just kinda shakes you up a little bit to see how little, um, how not far this country has come. I mean, they literally were flying a Confederate flag, carrying a Confederate flag in the middle of the Capitol. They, they literally had, uh, a hangman's noose hanging outside of the Capitol. I mean, they, they literally were trying to keep this country and the powers that be, the people that run this country, white and male. They literally, when, when you see all this stuff happening in two thousand and twenty one, the, the, the trauma is real. You know, and, and it's, it's really, it really shines a light on, um, we throw this hashtag around, this is America. This is, this is really America. This is, and if, if there's one thing that I can appreciate about the Trump administration in these last four years is the reality check. The reality check of where we really are. And, um, the deep seated hatred and, and, and vitriol that was being used several times today. Um, the deep seated racism, America's underbelly was, has been exposed. And we're not going back, just because we got. America's underbelly was, has been exposed and we're not going back just because we got, you know, somebody else in the White House. These, these folk ain't going back into, into hiding. They out now, you know? And so what really, really kind of messes with me and I gotta pray about is the fact that it, so much has been exposed. Over the last four years, but that day was the culmination of, of so much. And it was just like a splash of water in our face.
Wow. That's good stuff. Um, hmm. Okay. Who else wants to jump on that? I'm looking at comments, but who else wants to jump on that?
Well, I think, uh, one of the things you see is how. I don't even know what the word is, but how hard it is to maintain a democracy, I mean. To maintain like a democracy or just the, you know. The citizens of this country have to really work to make sure that this democracy or this constitution is followed. I mean, cause a- as was detailed there and you know, you can. Go from the election and all the way through, you know, it, at any time. I- i- if things don't go the way we, you know, they're supposed to, or the way we think they're supposed to. You know, wi- with this whole process, you know, the orderly transfer of powder, power would have never happened. And, and you know, and, and I'm just, you know, and we're just talking about, you know, the democracy and the way the, you know, the country is set up. You know, uh, let alone anything else, but you know, it was, it was very close to not. Going the way it was supposed to go, you know, I, I don't know. I, I, I mean, and that's. That's something that's from the people, you know, it's something that's, it, it doesn't just happen automatically, you know? Like, I, I mean, that's.
If I could just jump in real quick and think about this real quick, if it, if it weren't for a few, some people call them brave. I call them just. Sane, sensible Republicans. And I'm not even trying to make them out to be the heroes, but really think about it. And he tried, he tried to pressure, you know what I'm saying? Elite. Republicans in Georgia, Republicans in Florida, and, and, and what, let's look, actually look at the votes that he was challenging. Those are all really black areas of the country.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah.
So think, think about it real quick. If he's literally pressuring people like, like a fake mob boss. You know what I'm saying? Hey, if you could just find me eleven thousand eight hundred books, man, will we all be good? Like, think about that for a minute.
A fake mob boss calling the wrong phone number. I can't even, yeah, my fault. Go ahead, Mike.
No, I, I'm just saying, think about it. If, if, if those few hadn't have stood up to him, where in the world would we be right now? If Mike Pitts had have acted like, yeah, I, I'll do whatever you want me to do, where would this country be?
And, and, and.
You said it's really delicate.
Yeah, in a country of three hundred and thirty million people, those few people. You know, were, were, were the difference or could have been the difference. I mean. It, yeah, I, I, I can't articulate it the way I want to, but yes, it, it's, you know, it's, it's very delicate. I mean, it's, it's. It's, it's scary, you know?
Yeah, that's a good descriptive word right there that I would agree with. Um, Matthias?
I mean, I, I just, I mean, my, my immediate thoughts was just, I mean, this is, this is just the pure essence of, of white privilege. Um, I mean, where you can go to the Capitol building and just make, um, make a mockery of, of our democracy as, as Jabari was saying. And trying to literally overthrow the government like we some type of third world country. Um, I mean, it's, it's, it's stupid. Um, it's insane. And, but. Once again, I asked the question that everybody, you know, uh, pretty much asked immediately after. The, uh, after the insurrection happened. It's like, what if that were us, you know, people of, I mean, it would. You know, you know, I, I don't know what to say. I mean, it, it, bloodbath would have been an understatement. If that had have been brothers like me going up there, hanging all on the walls and having grappling hooks and, you know, I mean, it was, it was. I mean, I, I mean, it's almost bringing a tear to my eye because I mean, just to see that disparity. And for people that didn't believe that there is a, a gap as far as, as far as, as far as just like, you know. How, 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 how races are just, you know, spread apart, especially the African American race and minorities versus, you know, whites. That was the pure essence of it right there, right there. Because you think about it just a few weeks earlier, if I'm not mistaken. You know, there were armed guards and Mike, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know if it was the same intensity, but there were armed guards up there. For when we were, when Black Lives Matter movement was there. And it's like to see that type of just, I'm talking about. Just lockdown security right there for the Black Lives Matter movement, which was a peaceful process at that particular time. And then you go to that, you know, just weeks later, the insurrection where it's just total chaos, total mayhem. I mean, come on, like, if, if you're not a believer of white privilege, that's the pure example right there. So that was, that was just some of my immediate thoughts. I mean, I was just honestly, I was just speechless. I was just speechless. I couldn't even, it was only so much I could digest. I mean, at that particular time, and it was just, it, it's just. All I thought about was just, this is the pure essence of white privilege. Cause there's no way, but there's Gerard Adams could go up to that Capitol building. And get even, even yards without having a bullet in my head. It's just, I mean, it's impossible and nobody can tell me I'm wrong.
All those perimeters that Mike was talking about, whatever's the furthest outside perimeter. That, 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 that's the one we would have been stopped at, you know? And, and I mean, I mean, it's, I, I agree with you a hundred percent.
You know, and, uh, I think not only is, I mean, and, and there've been multiple instances of white pills. I remember when I was in. Talking about the disparity in security. I remember when I was in college, I want to say it was my sophomore, junior year. Um, we went to Daytona for spring break and, um, something I would not recommend, uh, for other college students. But, um, we went and, um, we went during the quote unquote black spring break when HBCU was on spring break. And a buddy of ours went. I guess for the mainstream college spring break two weeks before, and then he went again. Um, on the, uh, HBCU spring break. And he mentioned how, he was like, wow, where did all these police come from? He was like, there were three times as many people here two weeks ago. And he was like, there were drunk people just lay, like, just laid out on the sidewalk, you know? Just drunk, just sweet. And he was like, no police anywhere. I mean, you know. Um, you know, just all kind of debauchery, you know, was everywhere. He's like, and now. He's at this place everywhere and all there is is people with loud music and dancing and they. Are telling us to move along. And he was asking, where were you two weeks ago? And so I've, you know. I've experienced this type of thing, Atlanta, uh, what freak make would happen and different things where you would see. The reaction of those that are in power when it was, um. You know, uh, Caucasian event versus an African American event. Um, man, I was there. When they were burning things, when the Braves made it to the World Series in Atlanta. And Jabari, you were down there. I mean, they set, I want to say they set half our campus at Georgia Tech ablaze. Yes, I mean, all the fraternity stacked, literally all of their couches on the main intersection. And there were hanging lights above the intersection that like caught fire. There's sparks. I mean, like so destruction. Of like city electrical infrastructure, like the whole works. No police ever showed up. Fire department showed up, tried to put the fire out. No police. Um, then you have, you know, a black event and people are arrested. You can't stop. You roll down your window, they're yelling at you, you know, and to think. I guess what really is the carry on top with this, you know, white privilege is the fact that. You know, they tried to compare, you know, on certain news channels. This to, you know, social justice protests and the Black Lives Matter during the summer. And I said, you know, let's just pretend for a second that there was this type of violence. I said, let's just pretend. I said, at least that was a real thing that happened. Like, black people really have been killed by police. You know, minorities really have been, you know, targeted. And redlining really has happened and racism is real and slavery is real. And the very, you know, foundation of the structure of this country has been built. Like you could go back and read, um, papers from the original founders of this country. Talking about why they didn't put certain law, laws in place because they wanted to make sure that the mongrel races. Didn't take over, like literally in the, you know, in the very, you know, foundation of this country, those debates. You can, you can look it up, uh, and. These people are upset on something that wasn't even real.
Right.
They did all of this and it wasn't even real. It was literally a fairy tale. They were able to do all of this for something that wasn't even real. Like, it would be, it, you know, you would almost. To see if something were real, but it's not even real. So your anger is literally over something that, you know, that's like. You know, getting mad over like the Easter bunny or Santa Claus. Like, it's not even real. And they did this.
Yeah.
No, it was crazy.
Yeah.
I'll even go one better real quick because I heard this analogy. If you look at the first, um, you know, insurrection, the, the first, um. You know, time that someone wanted to, you know, disassociate themselves from the United States and secede. At the very least, you know, I'm not saying at all that I agree with them, but at the very least, southerners were mad. That their current way of life was being taken from them, as they, as they put it, you know what I'm saying? I'm, I'm not agreeing with it at all because it was my ancestors, but they had a proven track record and a business model of this is how we make our money. We, we use, you know, stolen slave labor and, you know what I'm saying? For whatever reason. They felt that they, that was something that they needed to fight for. You get what I'm saying? Again, I'm, I'm not at all agreeing with it, but at the very least, like you, like you just said, at least that was, um. For lack of a better term, a, a real threat to their current livelihoods. Now, don't get me started on the reparations that they immediately got after the war and all that kind of stuff. Like someone said, white people have been getting reparations constantly since forever. You, you know what I'm saying? But don't even get me started on that. But I'm just saying, at the very least, to, to your point. You know, JD, at least it was something real.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This was a total lie.
Yeah. I would agree.
It's funny. It's, it's, and you know, you bring up the whole slave against secession and then what happened right after that. It, the same thing, it's kind of happening now. Cause these people who storm in the Capitol and all of this and. You know, all of this tragedy that they brought, you know, it's just, the country is just kind of saying. Oh, okay. All right. You guys are just kind of come on back and we'll just continue it. You know, instead of coming down on them, just, you know, and I, I think things would have been a lot different. Had reconstruction went different. I know that's a totally different topic, but I mean, you know, i- i- it's kind of repeating itself right now. And, you know, to the detriment of, of, of all of us.
Yeah. Um, let me read this comment from Buddy Gil. He said, yes, this is America. It's who we are. The fact that those so-called Proud Boys and QAnon could basically get away with that insurgence. He said, uh, he also says, still, we say if it were black people. And I know a few of you mentioned that. Uh, of course, that was the first thing that came to my mind, you know, it would have been a bloodbath. We all know that. Um, now with, with that in mind, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask us, uh, ask us, ask you all a question to kind of wrap us up here. Um, I do want to know, and maybe we can maybe start with, um, Matthew and Marcus, um, on this one. Now, because of all, I mean, you heard everything. I, I, I want to, and guys, I'm telling you, I had, Apostle, no, I had a list. Things that I was gonna try and go through tonight, different subjects, but you know, we, we know what happens here. We can kind of get hung up on different, you know, subjects and that's fine. We're still, um, having this platform to be able to have you, uh, allow you to speak your voice and to have your opinions heard. Now, with all this that we've gone through and that we've dealt with, how, just one simple question. Now I'm going to the very last question, Apostle. How do you turn pain into meaning and or purpose? All that we've experienced thus far, all that. Now, I, I for one would have loved for the, um, the, the trial, uh, to, to, for them to convict him. Um, Trump, should I say, or forty-five, um, cause that would have sent more messages than just, you know, him being, you know, convicted or whatever. Um, but it, that didn't happen. Many, many knew that it wouldn't happen. Um, we, we've, we've gone through, we've gone through, we've experienced pain. We've experienced, um, rejection, if you will. We've experienced disappointment. How can we take this gentleman? And I want to start with those two, but I do want to go around. How do we take this and turn it into purpose? How do we take it and turn it into meaning? Uh, and, and, and when you're answering this question, think about your families. Think about what you want to do going forward. So let's, come on, Matthew. Um, you all understand my question, right? Okay.
Yeah. I, I think, um. What the insurrection did in a lot of ways, what the killing of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor and others did was. As fractured as we are, as, you know, um. Deep as we are on both ends of the spectrum. I feel like these very catastrophic events create an ear on both sides that wasn't there before. Um, hearts are open, minds are open, ears are open, eyes are open. It is imperative for those of us that have a platform, no matter how big or how small. Speak, use, um, really consider the influence we have. Especially with the younger generation and make sure that we are examples. And to the individuals who don't look like us, who maybe we wouldn't have had a conversation with before. It is imperative that we force ourselves into the realm of comfort, uncomfortability. Um, we, we can't be comfortable and consistently have these conversations with people who we know will agree with us. We must have these conversations with individuals who we know. Either didn't see it our side or still won't see it, our, see our side after all of this. Um, again, these things blow over. We don't hear George Floyd's name as much as we did six months ago. And this will blow over too. As crazy as that sounds, it is the truth. Um, so we have to capitalize on the opportunities we have to speak and grab a hold of the pain. And, and really try and facilitate, uh, healing, but we can't do that if we're all retreated to our own places. Um. That is an answer. I won't say that is the answer. I never say that any answer I have is the answer, except Jesus Christ. But, uh, that is an answer.
Okay, okay. You know, Matthew always had to come in here, trend, he trend. Very deep, very deep. Thank you. Um, Marcus?
Um, I mean, great question, number one, to, 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 to close this out. I mean, for, for me. I think it's a responsibility for us to, it's a responsibility for us to be uncomfortable. Um, not only from our side, but from everyone's side. I mean, I, I think about my job and. When I look to the right, the left and anywhere in the room, there's no other person that looked like me in the room. So. Uh, it's not for me to be uncomfortable. It's not for, for them to be uncomfortable for me to, look, let's get it. Um, you know, we, it was, it was, it was interesting because this is Black History Month and, you know. During one of my meetings, we were bringing up, you know, some black history and, and, and it was, it was. They look at me and they say, well, you know, enlighten us, right? You know, on, on that front, but it's, 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 it's more around like. It, it should not be that hesitation. Like, I guess what I'm trying to say is sometimes you get around Caucasian friends and other ethnic.
and other ethnicities, and it's hard for them to say the word black in front of you. You know, and it's like, um, Marcus, do you have anything to say? Because, you know, you're the black guy. You know, they don't, I mean, I'm not saying that that's how they should. But my point is, it's hard for them to say those words. And to, to Matthew's point, we all have to get uncomfortable. We all have to get to the point. I shouldn't have, if I say white, I say white. You know, I mean, obviously within context and respect, but at the end of the day, that shows we already have a divide of, sometimes my friends don't even want to say black in front of me. And I'm like, no, dude, we, so the, the answer is in the diversity, but it's also in the inclusion of, of having those conversations. Having that movement, having that, having that opportunity to continue that, 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 that conversation. You know, and, and, and these moments that happen across the America, we can't let those subside, you know? Uh, we have to use those as platforms, but the change is really, uh, on a, on a local side of who we touch, our network of people. Getting uncomfortable in that moment, because I'm telling you, like, it, this is something that, to Buzz's point, or Matthew's point, we, the ear, the ear on both sides ha- has been open. Don't let it close, you know, continue to have it. Don't let it get back to that comfortable mindset. Stay in those uncomfortable crunchy conversations like I like to have them. And, and, and we'll go from there, but we gotta stay uncomfortable so we can get, get better.
Love it. Uh, before I go to the next guys, let me just interject. Have either of you noticed that it's gone from, it, it's not African-American History Month, it is Black History Month? Did y'all notice that this, this, this year? And I mean that like in media and when people are referencing it. I don't know if you noticed that or not. It, it, it's always been the, well, for so, so many years, it was like politically correct African-American History Month. But I had been saying, I've been noticing them just saying Black History Month. Look around, look around it on, on TV, the advertisements, whatever. And I'm like, wow, okay. So you, I, you know, it came from somewhere and I'm sure it, all that we just went through had a whole lot to do with that. I really, and you, you just reminded me of that, Marcus. That's why I just wanted to throw that in there when you mentioned about being at work and them not even wanting to say, hey, you're the black guy, tell us about this, you know? Um, and then you also reminded me of, uh, was it Blackish? Dre at work, they're always because he's a black guy. Well, there's another one there, but they always refer to him for some reason, maybe to start a show. Okay, um, who else wants to go next? Um, Matthias?
Yeah, of course. I mean, my, my, my answer is, uh, it's pretty much the extension of what, what Marcus and Matthew were saying. But I did want to take a little bit deeper in that you had mentioned as far as with the family. And, uh, this is, um, where now we can plant, like for me, I can, and my, my two boys, I can plant seeds of diversity and plant those seeds of, hey, you know what? That person, just because they're not your, look like you, you don't have to treat them as the enemy, or you don't have to look down upon them. So as my brother stated, you know, just, you know, really kind of starting at the local level. And then I remember, uh, Matthew kind of said something like this in our last, in our last, uh, uh, episode. He said something along the lines of that as well, as far as just not, not retreating to your own. I can't remember verbatim what he said, but it, it resonated with me so hard because the thing is having these tough conversations with people that don't look like you. In fact, I just had one maybe two days ago as well with someone as well that, that, that just wanted to, you know, they, they felt kind of sticky about using the word black. And, you know, they were, you know, it's just, and it was, the conversation was based on music and African-American musicians, but he didn't want to say that. You know, and I was like, you know, just kind of letting them, putting them at ease and, you know, we started, then the conversation started to go into a, a positive direction. But like, it's, just to answer the question, just, we gotta, we gotta have those conversations. Um, and we can't be afraid to have those uncomfortable conversations. I'm talking about on both sides. You know, as well, you know, from me to someone that doesn't look like me and from that person that doesn't look like me even to me. Um, we gotta be, uh, able to have those conversations, but most importantly, we gotta, we gotta stop this madness with spreading on to this next generation. Um, I mean, ob- obviously, that's a, that's a, that's a pandemic even in itself. Uh, just with that, with these, uh, generations spewing that hate and that vitriol down to other generations and great grands and grandchildren and then they're just, you know, some of them are not gonna take it. Some of them are not gonna take it, you know, but, but, uh, unfortunately, you do have some, you know, future generations that, you know, they've been spewed hate all these years and they just follow my, fall in line with it. So, if we can, uh, for me, if I can, you know, have my boys spew those things into them and just try to make sure that they live a life of love instead of hate, you know, instead of hating people, then I, I think that'll be, you know, what I can do here in this little pod that I have.
Beautiful, beautiful. Guys, it sounded good. Come on, Jabari.
Uh, well, first, just let me say that, uh, you know, these guys, I, I, I just, you know, uh, we've all known each other for a long time, but I just remember these guys are just little, little, little kids playing Sega and running behind us, you know, they're all a few years younger than me. Not gonna say how many years, but just a few years younger than me, but I just say all that to say, you know, yeah, I, I just.
They take your words.
Thank you. I'm, 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 I'm proud of them, you know, I'm, 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 I mean, it's just, just the way they've grown up, you know? How they, you know, they grasp the thing. I mean, it's, it's, I'm sorry, I, 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 uh, you know, I just had to say that, but I, you know, I just want to let them know that, you know, I, I love them, all my little brothers. And, and it's just, it's, you know, it's great to hear them talk like that. It's great to see them, it's a families like that, you know, they're just, you know, their, their, their belief in the church and the God is, is just, is, okay, but that wasn't your question, no. But, uh, but, you know, and then, and then I, I say it to say, just to piggyback on what they're saying, you know, it's, our country's at a point, you know, there's always, I guess, inflection points or times in a country where our history where something can go one way or the other. And, you know, we're kind of at that point now, you know? Um, where this country can go one way or the other. And, you know, these guys are right. It's, it's, you know, we have to continue to have these conversations and we have to continue to, you know, um, go through this, you know, being uncomfortable because, you know, there was a time where everybody kind of got comfortable and, you know, we all kind of retreated to ourselves, uh, you know, retreated. And everybody was kind of making their own gains and doing all that. And you see where it got us. But, you know, we, we, we have to continue these conversations and, you know, one thing I always, I know this, this, um, episode was about the administration and, um, you know, uh, Biden administration, but, you know, the politics are local and, and, and that's, that's what we can control. Um, that, that's what has more of an effect on us. And, you know, that's something that we need to, um, not forget and, you know, make sure that we're keeping our voices heard out there because it, it matters. It, you know, it, it matters. And, um, but, uh, you know, that, I mean, that's just, you know, don't stop talking. Don't, 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 don't stop conversing. Just, you know, just keep talking and people not gonna agree with you, but, I mean, that's, that's human nature, you know, you, you're not supposed to agree, you know, we're supposed to get along. So it's, it's, you know, that's, that's just, just keep talking.
Beautiful. Thank you, thank you. Uh, let me see here. I got two more left. Uh, Michael, are you available?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you answer that question? Then we'll end with John.
Okay, sure, sure. Um, I feel like, I'm sorry, can you say the question one more time? You said, how do we turn pain into purpose?
Uh huh, and meaning and or meaning?
Yeah, I, I feel like, um, I don't know. I, I feel like it's, it's a tough situation in that, um, you know, I don't know. It, it, it's daunting, you know what I'm saying? Because when you, you know, we know how we were raised and we know how we would talk to love everybody and, you know, who we talked to. And then you, you look up, you wake up to reality and it's like, just as many people, if not more, were taught something the opposite. It's like, whoa, what, what country am I living in? But I know it's, it's never hopeless. And I have to keep reminding myself of that, honestly. Um, and I don't know, I also, I was, I was reading some more of the, uh, Amanda Gorman poem. And like towards the end, she said, oh, we re- we will rebuild, reconcile and recover. And every known rock of our nation and every corner called our country, our people diverse and beautiful will emerge battered and beautiful. When day comes, we step outside of the shade aflame and unafraid. The new dawn blooms as we free it. For there is always light, if we're only brave enough to see it. If we're only, if only we're brave enough to be it. That's how she ended it. And I feel like that's powerful in that, that kind of goes on, you know, what we were taught in the scriptures. You are the light of the world. You know what I'm saying? It's, it's, it's like you got to be comfortable enough in your own skin. You know, be, be comfortable enough to show that light.
Yeah.
And yes, it sounds basic. Yes, it's, you know, sunshine ban, this little light of mine, but it's the truth. You know what I'm saying? It's, it's, it's honestly the truth. I, I, it was so many people that, you know, I can't tell you, so many different circumstances, you know, where, hey, you, you know, I'm, I'm glad you're okay. Or when it comes to the, you know, the insurrection thing that I honestly didn't even know they, they knew me like that, or, you know what I'm saying? And I could only point to, yeah, it was a harrowing story and all that, but people see something different about me. You know what I'm saying? It's not to brag on me, because we, we all came from the same background, you know? There, there's something different, honestly, about, about us. And, and I don't mind saying that because we all come under the same lineage, you know, of Pastor Adams, you know what I'm saying? Where it was, it was a difference there, you know what I'm saying? Even within the Christian world, even within the Kojic world, there was, there was always something peculiar about that, like, you know, some people took it to, you know, and stream is like, we're the only way and, you know, you know, I, I won't go down that road. You get my point? It is, it's a fine line you gotta walk, but let's, let's be proud. Well, I guess what I'm saying is, let's be proud in the light and, and not be afraid to show. I feel like that, that is honestly, you know, that, that's where we can, that, that goes along and coincides with what other people have been saying, you know, about not being afraid to have a conversation, not being afraid to be vulnerable. You know what I'm saying? You, you won't mind going into a little bit of a dark area because you know you got that light.
Come on now.
You, you, you know, you got the only solution to that problem right there. You know what I'm saying? You won't be able, you won't be afraid to go into a situation where, you know, that's why I never really fully understood, you know, why are we afraid to talk to people who may disagree with us or who, who may, may see the world or see Christianity different than us? You know what I'm saying? Like, I'll never forget like how I, I felt differently about certain things within the Christian world after like, kind of like moving out here a little bit. I'm not saying this because DC changed me or anything like that. I'm just saying, sometimes when you grow up and you, you view the Bible differently, you, you see different things, different ways. And, and it's like, sometimes you have to, um, what, what did Paul say? Um, in order to win some, I've got to, um, what's, what's the word I'm looking for? Be all things to all men? You get what I'm saying? Right, right. So I may win some. And, and the, the, I guess the point I'm trying to make is, how are you even gonna go down that road if you're even afraid to come and talk to somebody in the first place? You know what I'm saying? Whether they look like you, whether they're white, or they believe differently than you, you know what I'm saying? They may be Muslim or Hindu. They may be gay. Like, what are we doing to get out of our own bubble? Like, this is what I'm saying. If we know we got that light, don't, don't be afraid to, to use it. That's all I'm gonna say.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
He didn't preach. Look, I was leaving the youth pastor for that. He almost, uh, maybe.
I'm sorry, JD. I'm, I'm the word before the word, JD. Go, go ahead.
You're good, man. No, I think, um, no, I think everybody's really summed it up, you know, and, you know, when you're talking about taking that pain and, you know, how to, how to use it. And to me, I think the biggest thing is you don't just let it either fester or just fade away and not be pain anymore. Um, you know, I think it was Matthias who said that, you know, eventually, or, or, uh, or Matthew, this is gonna go away. As crazy as it sounds, people will get over January sixth and, you know, something else will, will take its place. But I think what we really need to do is make sure, like I used to, you know, um, I held some uh, meetings and things, even while the social justice stuff was going on. And it was, okay, we've marched, we did this, you know, we, we feel good that we did our thing. Now what? Are, are we just gonna go home? Am I just gonna go back to my job and keep doing what I was doing? What am I actually gonna do to bring about change so that I'm not right back here in sixty years? Like, we should have, you know, what didn't happen after the sixties that we're here again in twenty twenty? You know, fifty-six years later, fifty-four years later, and we're still back here doing the same thing. What am I willing to sacrifice to stay in that pain, to stay in that moment to cause me to act? Am I willing to, uh, to learn what it takes to get a law passed? You know, uh, somebody said all politics are local. I think that was Jabari. So, law enforcement, what am I willing to do in my village, in my county, in my state? Uh, am I willing to take an hour to, you know, read and then write letters um, to my local or state representatives who are part of whatever committee that's over, uh, law reform? Right? What am I willing to do so that my kids, kids aren't back out here protesting again in twenty fifty or twenty seventy? You know, so we can't just take this and feel good about ourselves. Ooh, yay, you know, blue rain, we got a new administration. We did our job, we went and we voted, and now it's over. Like, you know, we started off by talking about this administration and what have they done? And us holding them accountable. Are we willing to hold ourselves accountable? Are we willing to keep doing what it takes? You know, it, it's, it's easy to go out in your anger and, and make a poster and, you know, pump your fist and yell in the streets. But after that, what are you willing to do? And that's fine. I mean, I did it. You know, I took my boys out there, but then what?
Yeah.
You know, and then the last thing is, uh, uh, we have to make sure that as we're going about doing the change, and this is the hard part again, I'm not out here to win an argument. I'm not out here to prove that my way is right and their way is wrong. I know that their way is wrong. I know that hate and racism and bigotry and sexism and all the isms are wrong. I have to go out there to change those hearts and change those minds. Everything that I'm doing is to change the hearts and change the minds. So, you know, if I'm out there and I'm just trying to yell somebody down so that they shut up, okay? All right, so now they shut up, but I'm gonna walk away and they gonna start talking again. You know what I'm saying? You know? And, you know, they're, oh, you shut down a car, okay, they're gonna find something else. Now, I'm not saying that we allow hate to feel like it can just be out in the light of day. I'm not saying that, right? I mean, it should be stopped. But at the end of the day, if you don't change those hearts and minds, hate is still winning. It's just growing in the dark. So we have to go out of the mindset to have, to take that pain and allow it to give us stress to number one, continue to act, continue to bring about actual change, see it through, and number two, to make sure that that change is a change of the heart and of the mind. And there may be some that we'll never reach, but that's okay. Because Paul said it's to win some. We're gonna go out there to try to change the hearts and minds of all of them, and we'll take the ones that we can get. So, you know, that's, that, that's my take on it.
That's your take. Oui, oui, oui. You guys, I'm telling you, have done it again. I have just been enjoying everything. Do, do me a favor, give me two minutes. I want to play this, I want to play this spoken word, um, from Elder Kevin McGee.
Looking for a better way, my brothers and I made up our minds to change the hands of time because time is going erratic, too much static. God, we need to remind the world that you are in control and sitting on the throne. So Father, here we are, brothers gathered together representing your kingdom. Brothers forming the most powerful fraternal order ever known. No, not the Kappa's, no, the Alpha's, not even the Omegas. But we hail from the Father, Son, and Holy Ghost. And so here we are exercising our commitment to our relationship with you, Father. Because real men pray, yeah. We pray that our streets will be safe, that our children will be prayed for and not prayed upon, that our queens will no longer be disrespected and rejected by wolves and indris elbers clothing. We pray that our men will no longer be the victim of gun violence by the police or even us. We pray because even though Kamala made it in, it doesn't give us an automatic leg up. There is still work to do. And though we have made some allies and other ethnicities, they still can't know the extent of our firsthand struggles. So we pray, we stand in agreement that we will work to the best of our ability to make a change to our neighborhoods, foster change in our mindsets so that we will truly believe that we can do all things through Christ. So God, we lay down the drugs, the guns, the agenda of getting over the hustling and the bustling and not trusting. We lay it at the foot of the cross and we pick up faith, wisdom, and peace and determination. And we do what real men do. We pray.
Ooh, I can snap a few fingers there. My Lord, my Lord. Uh, that was, thank you, Elder McGee. Thank you, thank you. That was deep. Um, and can kind of summarize what we've, what you gentlemen have been saying on this evening. Um, Apostle, you want to say anything, um, before we actually head on out?
Um, I enjoyed these guys. Can I add to that last question real quick?
Of course you can.
You know, um, y'all, y'all just inspire me so much, really. Uh, I didn't grow up knowing you guys, you know, but just listening to you guys, I'm, I'm so proud of what you guys represent. Um, but how do we turn our pain into meaning and purpose? Uh, simply, we just got to get in the fight. And, um, you know, we hear so much in this, in, in America, never forget, never forget, never forget. But usually when they say that, what they're asking us not to forget is any assault against America or Americanism or, or nationalism. But the oppressed are always told, you know, to get over it and move on. And so one of the things that I think that we need to do is all of these things that we are experiencing. We need to continue, just like you guys were saying, I'm just echoing you guys. Continue talking about it, continue using our platforms, continue to pray, continue to gather and have, you know, platforms such as this and talk about things that are uncomfortable. You know, with people who are not used to talking to, to them, you know, uh, with. And so, um, and then the last thing that I want to say is that concerning, um, unity, I, I can't remember who brought the word unity, uh, uh, but I always ask myself when that word is thrown around. Because sometimes, you know, uh, those in power will say, well, we need to come together. Isn't it ironic how now, you know, the right and the conservatives are saying, why don't we come together now? Okay, well, what are we unifying with? What do you want us to unify with? What do you want the oppressed to unify with? What do you want the, those who have been, uh, subjected to systematic racism to really unify with? You know, and so those are some of the questions that we have to ask. And then also concerning unity amongst people like us. What is unity? Unity, William Barber said this and it just really resonated in my spirit and I promise you I'm done. Um, unity does not always have to be the whole. Sometimes we feel like we don't have enough people to foster a movement. But unity does not have to mean a whole. Unity simply means enough. Do we have enough? Are we praying enough? Do we have enough support? And maybe we just unify around one word and that's change. We don't like what we see, we don't like what we're experiencing, so how can we fight for something different? And so, um, that's, I'll just end on that note.
Wow. You guys have given us a lot to think about on this evening. Um, and, oh, just loaded, just loaded. I need to tell you, Cornelius Crossley, Coach Crossley was supposed to join us on tonight, but he had, uh, things have started back up, uh, with basketball. And so he had a practice on this evening, so he sent a message and he's, he's really sorry that he missed us on tonight. Um, the practice went over, maybe he hasn't run some more laps or something, I don't know. But, uh, our, our best to Coach, Coach Crossley, because it, that, this is something different, you know? He has to kind of maneuver his way with this COVID and everything and being the coach. So I can, I can only imagine, um, what all he has to deal with. And, um, and gentlemen, again, thank you so much for, uh, consenting. Um, sometimes I'm sending out the message, I'm like, I hope they say yes, I hope they say. But you all are so wonderful. Um, and I, again, I, I talk, I, I have chosen you. I believe God has given me to ask you all to be on this panel. Um, and you, you always come and you bring the insight that we need. You, you're, you're able to express yourselves. This is a no, no judgment zone. Are you able to express yourselves? And this is what, this, as, as a sister, as a woman, I need to hear it. Okay? So if I need to hear, you can only imagine your wives, your daughters, they, they need to hear it as well. They need to hear it. Your sisters, your mom, you know, they, they need to, we all, we need to hear it. Um, so that, that's why I'm appreciative of this platform. I'm going to recognize a few more people before we get out of here. I see somebody's wife is on, um, Ms. Jackson. Oh, whoop, I was about to say something else. Thank you for joining us, little sis. I appreciate you. Uh, Chanel is on. I see somebody caught that. Uh, Marcus, uh, Hill is on. He really enjoyed everyone on tonight. He said, you brothers are awesome. This conversation needs to happen more in our communities. And I totally agree with this. Uh, Buddy Gil mentioned earlier, we continue to fight. Looks like he was answering the question himself. And learn and get smarter in our fight, educate and empower. We saw in the impeachment trial how important numbers and votes matter. So we must have those conversations, educate and vote. I thank you for that and I agree with it. Uh, Adam DeBose is on, Belina, my goddaughter. Thank you, sweetie, for watching on tonight. Um, so we're going to wrap up and get out of here. I hope I didn't miss anybody else. Um, uh, it'll be, again, thank you again for that spoken word. It was, it was on point and it, it touched, uh, the different, um, things that we discussed on tonight. So thank you again, uh, for providing that for us. We're going to head on out of here, guys, and, um, you know, keep your heads up. Do what you're supposed to do. Take care of them families. Uh, Matthew, you coming, you coming, he's coming.
After he takes over the world.
What, what was that?
I said, after he takes over the world.
Tell me about it.
Once he's, once he's king, he'll start accepting applications for clean.
Did you really just do that? Okay, all right. I'm with you there. I'm with you there. Uh, Apostle, thank you again. I can't thank you enough for helping me out and joining me, uh, with these gentlemen. They always say that they enjoy listening to you and hearing from you and you say this about them. So, um, thank you again and thank you to all my viewers, watchers, listeners, um, Facebook and YouTube for joining us on this evening and sharing, uh, in with us. Hopefully there was something that was said from these gentlemen that will help and inspire you. So we're going to get out of here. Let me play my jingle and, uh, go to my website, Get Caught Internet Radio. Oh, yeah, I do have like, uh, three other shows this week. So guys, please stick with me, uh, tomorrow afternoon. Um, I am, uh, 12 noon, Jules TV. You that have children, go to Jules TV, J O O L S TV. Gentlemen and, uh, mamas, daddies and mamas, you, you all have nieces and nephews too. Please go and check them out because on tomorrow, I'm going to interview, uh, African American, sorry, black couple, African American couple, however you want to say it, at 12 noon, they have established their own. Um, uh, you'll, you'll see, come, come tomorrow. Listen to me, ma. If you can't listen live, please make sure you hear the playback. And then on Wednesday, Health and Wellness with Dr. Shirley Hill. Thursday evening A and D with my co-host. A and D conversation, you guys, 6:00 PM on Thursday. All right. And then by Friday, I'm going to sleep. All right, we're going to get out of here and, um, guys, take care. All right, guys, you know, until we get to the end of every broadcast, make sure you guys stay safe. Wash your hands, wear your mask, six feet. All right, we want you all to be safe. Love you and peace.